Okay, let's give it a shot. Checking audio for YouTube. Okay, welcome, everybody. With digital technology, we are very punctual. One, two, three, four. Meeting for the Common Council for City of Delafield. Hey, hey. May 19th is starting exactly at 7:00 PM for 2025. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Okay, Mayor Iker.
President.
Administrator Hafner.
Here.
Alderperson Henry.
Here.
Alderperson Schaefer.
Here.
Alderperson Valdi.
Here.
Alderperson Wilken.
Here.
Alderperson Grimmer.
Here.
Alderperson Price.
Here.
Alderperson Laffland.
Here.
All right, we have a full house. So with that, looking for a motion to pass the minutes from our May 5th, 2025 regular meeting.
I so move.
I... I move to postpone that until our next meeting.
I second that. The minutes are not available yet.
It's been motioned and seconded. And so, Alderperson Schaefer, what would... So there's... It's motioned and seconded from Jackie and Dirk. So discussion, it doesn't have to pass, but what's the... Looking for a reason?
Haven't seen the minutes.
The minutes haven't been published yet, Mayor.
They were not in our package.
Very appropriate that they be postponed. I'm sorry. So we're looking... So anyway, so let's see. It's been moved and seconded. So looking for a motion that actually... So anyways, the proper way to do this would be to...
Withdraw my motion.
To decline it, and then we'll bring it up in our next meeting.
Okay.
So all those in favor, say aye.
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 Wait, no.
All those in favor of passing the minutes that we don't have.
No.
Well, that...
No.
All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion fails. Cool. See the minutes next meeting. I'm sorry, my bad. Number five, City of Delafield citizens' comments. So I'm looking for any citizens who wish to comment on anything on or off the agenda. Going once, citizens' comments, twice? Okay, no citizens wish to comment. Item six, consent agenda, there are none. Seven, boards, committees, and commission reports. Seven A licenses. So there's a... We've got alcohol beverage licenses. There's several. This is that time of year. Molly is not here to go through her letter, but she did list several items that need to be approved. There's four of them, I believe. So I'm looking for someone to take action on those four.
I move to approve the request from Aldis, number 92, located at 2840 Heritage Drive, Delafield, for a Class A liquor license and Class A beer license to allow for sales of alcohol for consumption off premises to be granted and issued in accordance with Ordinance 834 and Wisconsin Statute 125.25 and 125.512.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay or abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Any other?
Move to approve the request by Wellhouse 1900 for Class B beer license and Class C wine license.
I'll second.
Hang on one sec.
Tim, I thought we were... We had used up our licenses. We still had room for another one?
Pardon me? These are mostly renewals.
Just renewal? Okay.
It's that season, if you read Molly's note. Let's see here. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes.
One other thing, Alderman Price is most of these are beer and wine licenses, which we don't have a quota for. Only the Olive Garden is a liquor license, and that is a renewal.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'll move to approve the request by Marcus Hillside Cinema. Two-point successor, Agent Lamarvin Jackson is alcohol beverage agent, pending completion and approval of the required background check.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. We can watch movies and drink.
I can... I move to approve the 2526 alcohol beverage retail license renewal for Olive Garden and Angelino's Restaurant to be granted on June 15th, as required by Wisconsin Statute 12551C, with issuance pending completion of agent officer background checks and verification.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay or abstentions? Okay, Angelino's and Olive Garden have their liquor license renewed. So if you're here for that, you're free to leave or you can stay. Next item on the agenda is Plan Commission, Alderman Grimmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Four items on our agenda tonight for your review, starting with Munger Holdings. This is aka Lake Country Bubbles Foam Farm. The applicant is requesting approval of a storm water maintenance agreement, identifying maintenance obligations, annual inspections, et cetera. The document is in your packet. I will move to approve DELC 0803999. Applicant Cameron McFarlane, MSI General, on behalf of Lake Country Capital Bubbles Foam Farm, approving their storm water maintenance agreement.
Second.
Is there any discussion or any questions to clarify? It's been a long time in the making. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay or abstentions? Okay, we have a storm water maintenance agreement approved for Bubbles.
Thank you. Number two, we have Terry and Kathleen Morgan, who are requesting certified survey map approval to combine two lots into one. The background on this is Terry and Kathleen are paying two fire fees. They own two adjoining lots, one which has the primary residence. The other lot has the accessory structure. Plan Commission approved this unanimously. It solves a zoning issue and reasonably reasonably makes them responsible for only one fire fee instead of two.
Matt, if I understand correctly, clarify if I'm wrong, this also makes it conforming because the garage being separate on property is not allowed without the house, correct?
Correct. Yep.
And the lot size currently is not conforming of the individual. And it also looks like the house with the lot on it has no street access because there's another lot on all four sides. There's a lot going... There's a lot of...
There's a lot going on there.
There's a lot good about this change.
Yeah. And they don't have to pay two times what should be just a one-time fire fee. I'll make a motion to approve DELC 0797 and 057 and DELC 0797063, 1538 Second Street. Terry and Kathleen Morgan combining two lots into one.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay or abstentions? Okay, that is... Motion is passed.
Number three, C. This is KlarTech, I believe.
KharTech.
KharTech, excuse me. This is in the Cushing Park Business Center. This applicant has developed that property throughout the years. In 1998, they developed an 8,000-square-foot building. Following in 2003, another 10,000-square-foot addition. A third addition in 2014, and another 10,000-square-foot. The applicant's now proposing a fourth addition. That is an additional 10,000-square-foot for a total of 38,000, roughly 38,000 square feet for warehouse storage. No additional employees, no change in operations. And the addition fits within the building envelope. I would reference the packet agenda, which goes through the parking, storm water, lighting, landscaping, signage, et cetera. Plan Commission reviewed and passed this unanimously. I'll make a motion to approve DELC 079 4023. Applicant Ben Freeman, Impact General, approving their site plan and appearance and specific implementation plan to add on to the existing building occupied by KharTech, a manufacturing and warehousing facility.
Second.
It's nice to have a growing, successful business staying with us.
I would... I would addend my motion to include the recommendations identified in the packet, items one through four.
Is it agreeable to the second?
It's agreeable.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay or abstentions? All right, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. And now the big one.
We keep losing our audience.
It's riveting. You sure you don't want to stay for impervious surfaces?
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, cowards. Discussion and action to initiate an application to amend chapter... Text of Chapter 52 Zoning Ordinance regarding impervious surface provisions. Alderman Price is gonna jump in on this one as well. Essentially, this is... Was developed by Lake Welfare how many years ago?
Started three years ago, possibly?
Three years ago. I'll cover the highlights, and then we'll get to the... And then we'll get to the body of our work tonight. As Alderman Price mentioned, in early, approximately 2021, discussions began for more stringent regulations, including limits on impervious surfaces on all lots with frontage on a navigable walkway. on a navigable walkway, waterway that exceeds twenty thousand square feet with at least a hundred feet of frontage. Lake Welfare recommendation was to increase that impervious surface to sixty percent. Is that accurate?
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent. The issue came before Plan Commission, and Plan Commission punted to common council to have this discussion. I would refer you to the packet to go through the specifics of the, what's before us tonight. But, the considerations I want to jump to on page three, and I'm gonna read through those. The city will need to determine staff members that will be responsible for permitting and enforcing provisions. Impervious surfaces typically don't require a building permit. An application fee will need to be established. Number two, residents and businesses will need to be educated regarding these revised provisions. Applicants currently do not typically reach out to the city regarding the installation of sidewalks, patios, driveways, unless the work is being conducted in the right of the way of the road. Number three, there may be many existing lots that do not conform to the standards. Adjacent properties may be held to different standards. Number four, if treated impervious surfaces are allowed, staff will need to be designated to review and enforce such standards. This type of review would typically require engineering review. This will come at a cost to the applicant. Five, staff should be prepared with resources to manage violations. And six, Lake Welfare should provide a report from the annual Lake Welfare meeting, including the number of attendees, discussion that took place, and a summary of the comments provided at the meeting. The Plan Commission at their April meeting referred this issue to the common council to decide whether to initiate the text amendments to amend chapter fifty-two, and the staff is recommending the council provide feedback regarding those text amendments proposed by Lake Welfare and decide whether to initiate said text amendments. So I'll have Paul, if you want to jump in and add anything else.
Terry, a little history on this. When we first went to the Plan Commission, we had a forty percent impervious surface limit, and then the thirty-five foot limit on the lake frontage. They passed the thirty-five foot lake frontage, but felt the forty percent, actually, they already weren't necessarily opposed to the forty percent, but they just felt that they should be, have somewhat of a hearing on that and discuss it at the Lake Awareness Meeting, which we did again this past year. It'll be a new one coming up in September, and we can, we can bring it up one more time. To make it a little bit easier to enforce, we said it was fine to go from forty percent to fifty percent. And again, impervious surface means surfaces that water can't pass through. Some people in our committee got a little confused on what was pervious and what was impervious. But fifty percent of the lot then would be house, lot, driveway. Right now, people can concrete over your entire front yard and backyard, and we, we can't stop them, because there was nothing in there, in the code for impervious surfaces. So we thought we'd make this pretty generous and make it fifty percent, so at least half the lot will allow water to drain back into the lake or drain back in, into the ground itself. We realize there could be some, you know, situations, if somebody just wants to put a ten-by-ten patio in their, in their backyard, that we're not trying to stop that. Our biggest concern was brand-new properties, buildings being tore down, where, you know, complete, the building inspector is there all the time granting the initial permits, so all these changes could be made at that time. The intent was not to limit somebody putting in a small patio or adding a sidewalk. That would have very, very little impact, or that could be something that the, the building inspector himself could just say, fine, that's obviously under the fifty percent limit. So, and my understanding was, from the last meeting, that Plan Commission had to send this back to the Plan, the common council, and then, once the council sent it back to Plan Commission, then they could, they could act on it. But it couldn't act on it until the council sent it back to them.
Yeah, so, you know, point of order on that is that Plan Commission or the council doesn't just say, we're gonna make a new law. There has to be an applicant. There has to be somebody petitions and starts the application to initiate a public hearing and present a new change or an amendment to, to an existing ordinance. Plan Commission felt, you know, when this was presented to us, that it wasn't really, because of these concerns about some of the administrative costs and what's been in place and, and that, that council should be the, if, if we wanted to initiate the application, start here, as opposed to Plan Commission, because we didn't have the, there wasn't the, there wasn't a catalyst that was like on our shoulders saying, we have to do this. So, and also the considerations of the fact that we do not currently track impervious surfaces, right, as far as citywide. We don't have a survey, we don't have history, we don't have existing properties to say, if you wanted to put that small, modest addition of widening your driveway by three feet or whatever, near the lake or anywhere in the city, we don't have that data. So, to track and force, and that changes, might create a decent amount of work, to maybe perhaps even initiate an initial survey to establish what the current status is, like what, what is the current state of all the properties that might be affected by this ordinance change? To say, you're at fifty-two percent, this would put you at fifty-eight percent or sixty-two percent, you have to make, so we don't have that surveying information, and there could be some costs associated with this that would be, to be determined. Is that, I don't know, Tom might have something to say about this.
Yeah, there will definitely be costs. I don't know that we would have to have a licensed surveyor do a survey. I mean, typically what you do with this is you just go from a aerial photograph of the property, and you can typically identify walks and driveways and houses and draw polygons around them and come up with approximate areas and figure out what percent currently is impervious.
Right, and, and so there's certain, there's certain regulations in, in place right now with, with a certain distance from shore, correct? As far as-
Correct.
-impervious surfaces and anything's, changes you make. So, when you're dealing with putting something in place beyond that, that's kind of, it's new territory for us. And appreciating that the, a common goal for everybody in the city is to protect the lakes and the waterways and that, and, and the runoff is admirable, but we, you know, Plan Commission moved it up to the council to see if additional work that might be entailed in this with the building inspector and that would be, you know, kind of a return on investment, you know, type of thing. But what we'd be looking for here is if the council would want to make a motion to move this forward based on this general principle and these parameters, and have Plan Commission dive in, and obviously, we look for Lake Welfare input on it, to perhaps put something in place and have a public hearing on a change.
So I have, so I have a question. Is it okay if I talk?
Absolutely.
All right, I want to make sure it's my turn. So I'm looking at section fifty-two twenty-eight, which, I don't know if that's our section or a state statute or what that is. Is that us? Is that administrative code for the city?
It looks like the city code.
So we already have a three-part administrative code that says, the purpose and intent of the impervious services regulation is to set standards that are intended to protect water quality, fish and wildlife habitat, and protect against pollution of navigable waters. And that goes into, describes some things I don't need to repeat, but the limitations that are currently in effect, which I think Paul mentioned, is that no impervious surface is permitted within thirty-five feet currently, of the, within thirty-five feet of the high water mark of a navigable waterway, with two exceptions. One is boat houses that comply with all of the provisions of this section and the Wisconsin De Arzaregs, and anything that's a single walkway to the waterway with, with not to exceed five feet. So the question I have when I look at this is, this is a meaningful restriction already. What triggered the need for this? Do we have something measurable that says we're getting pollution in the lakes? Or did somebody just read this in a book and said, this just sounds like it'd be good to have? Or what's driving this? Because it does seem like it puts a pretty big burden on the city personnel to even detect if there's a problem here. And I don't know that we'd ever want to have the resources allocated that if it's not something actually happening to warrant the change.
Well, what the, what the, what the Lake Welfare wanted to do is basically tie this back in together, just like it was when we first proposed it, to include it within that thirty-five feet, thirty-five feet of water from the lake backwards. At that point, any administration of that was done by the building inspector, mostly for brand-new homes or home tear downs and things like that. We didn't really want to have it totally separated for these small ancillary projects. That was not, not our concern. Our concern was a trend in the lake for taking down homes, tearing them down, and then just building with huge homes, and then having the front yard and backyard be concrete. There's just no water coming down. We can cite three, four, or five large homes done just, just recently. That's the intent, to try and get rid of the real, the real, real problem houses, not the guy who's adding a patio or a sidewalk. We didn't even think that those would be even applicable under this, just like the thirty-five foot rule wouldn't be applicable.
Well, I mean, Paul, an ordinance would have to be fair and equitable, so I mean, if it's, if it's based on impervious area, you gotta treat the decks and the driveways the same as a brand-new construction, so if there's a property whose house already exceeds fifty percent, they would not be able to put a ten-by-ten patio in place in addition to that, if it's, if you're gonna base it on impervious area.
Yeah, but look, again, we're looking at twenty thousand square foot lots on larger, a ten-by-ten, hundred square foot patio is not gonna be, not gonna be an issue. I mean, I suppose if somebody was at forty-nine and a half per percent, going to fifties a possibility, but-
Some people might already be at fifty-five percent and grandfathered in, they won't be able to do anything in the future unless they remove some impervious area.
Yep. Do, do we have any problem properties like that currently? I mean, has anybody ever-
I don't know, we haven't been asked to-
-paved their front yard? It seems like an unlikely scenario.
No, I'm not aware of anyone who's-
They have plenty of lot.
-excessively paved their yard.
Let's keep the camera, let's, Stephen-
We're still within fifty percent.
We need our open, open mics, please, if we're gonna be asking questions.
Okay, I'll repeat it on the mic, sorry. I just, Paul and I are both members of the yacht club, and I just asked him, is our yacht club in violation of this already? And he said he doesn't think so. But, that was curious, because it seems like we have a lot of paved area that is the predominance of our property that's closer than thirty-five feet, but I might be wrong, I didn't go measure. I'm just kind of thinking out loud, because is, does it bring into play a lot of people already sitting there that never had this rule applied? And will they be inequitably ahead or behind in some way or another if we were to impose a new barrier or new limitation?
So if someone were to pave over their entire lot, would that not create drainage issues that would then have to be addressed by the city anyway? I mean, like, that would be already in violation of our other ordinances. I mean, you can't just pave over and cause issue, drainage issues for your neighbors.
Right now, if you wanted to pave over your lot, you could.
Right, but it would, I mean, no, not if it's-
Except for the thirty-five feet.
But also not if it's causing water issues for your neighbors or water issues for, I mean, if it's causing problems, I mean, I'm, I'm not in favor of paving over, of having, I, I don't think that's a good idea at all, but I feel like there would be, if that were to happen, there would be other recourses to address that specifically, like, for the issues that you're talking about, that it would, you wouldn't have any drainage for that entire lot. I'm just-
I don't know, would you have other recourse? I mean, what other, to Paul's point, you know, thirty-five feet back, yes, you could put, you know, pave it over. Are there other, and you could handle the drainage, you know, in reasonable ways, but still pave over, you know, X amount of your property, which is, you know, I, I understand Lake Welfare's point. There are, you know, there's the health of the lake, and being proactive on increasing impervious surfaces for the health of the lake is, you know, is a worthy venture.
Does our building code give latitude to regulate the paving over levels?
I don't believe it does.
Was the question, the latitude to what?
Does the building code give us the ability to regulate how much someone paves over their land?
It, it does not, but as Danielle pointed out, there is a provision where you can't negatively impact your neighbors with drainage, but many of the lake lots are situated such that they could slope right to the lake, and you could discharge the water right to the lake without impacting your neighbors.
Yeah, that's the problem, though. You're running it all into the lake.
So, so, to, understanding the conversation here, we're getting into things that setbacks, drainage, uh-
Alternative codes.
Impact, impact on neighbors. Plan Commission's used to dealing with these.
Right.
And that's what they do.
That's why we like to send it back to Plan Commission, have the discussion with them, and bring it back.
Understanding that there may be, and it would, it would end up coming back to us as far as an ordinance change, if, and we could have in that, in that discussion, what impact that might be as far as administrative costs before we would approve it, but is this something you'd like the Plan Commission to initiate? Would you like to initiate an application to the Plan Commission to investigate and update to this ordinance, is really the question?
I guess I'll add in one last piece-
Yes.
-to that deliberation, and that is, if, I personally, I guess I don't have a clear perspective on how I feel about this. I lean against it, just because of the regulation, I'm not sure, I'm not a hundred percent convinced is necessary, but if they wanted to bring it back to us, I would want to have the answer to the question of how many people are in violation the moment we pass it.
I don't think we should wait for violations. I think we want to be proactive. The lake-
That's what I mean, but I mean people who are there now, like our yacht club.
I guess I misunderstood your question.
Right, so if we have people who, once we change the rule, if they hadn't already done it, they would be in violation?
No. Anybody who's already, we're, we're not gonna tell people that, you know, to take a driveway out. You know, if they're there, they're there, but we can't change that. We're talking about new things.
That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is it's inequitable. The new people coming in, they don't get to play by the same rules. And if we already have a whole lot of people who have not met the standard we're gonna set, and now we impose it on the new people, I just wonder how much of that we have, that will possibly fill the room with people saying, what are you doing?
Well, I think we do that all, we do that often, where we, we see a problem, so we'll address it, and it can't apply to the people before. So that may be not necessarily, my bigger concern would be, how do we know what's new and what's not, when we've never regulated in the first place? So, that would be my concern, is who, if somebody does it, if I was there before, like, how would we ever know? There's no regulation on it now. So that, the enforcement is a big issue for me. What I would like to see, if this does come back to us, is what is the goal? Like, I mean, you, you were talking about drainage, and now it is a goal so that the water's not going straight into the lake? Okay, then I'd like to see solutions for that, because somebody could still not, I mean, we, you could have somebody who has very little impervious surfaces, but they still aim everything right at the lake. So if the goal is to keep the water from going straight into the lake, what would be a reasonable solution for that? So that would be my, what I would like to see is, what is the goal and what is an actual solution to that goal versus just like, you can't pave? Now, if it's sightly, we don't want to see paved over an entire, well, then we would put restrictions on how much you can pave, or, you know, those kinds of things. I'd just like to see what the, what the goal is.
I have a question we don't need to answer, but at some point needs to be addressed. An exception, or excluded from the calculation as roadways, as defined in state statute three forty dot oh-one. Sidewalks, what about private roads, shared roads? If you have, you know, easements to properties, which you typically have near the lake, that could be a significant portion of somebody's lot, and if it's a roadway, it's impervious. So, those people would be probably unfairly burdened.
But again, what this ordinance is trying to do is not change any existing properties right now. Whatever you've got, you're gonna keep. What we're changing, though, is if you change your lot, you, you tear it down, you combine lots, and now build a new structure, at least start somewhere to have it done properly so it doesn't affect the lake negatively.
True.
And some of the, the building along Nagleka Road in recent years has just been horrific. I mean, you go back there and walk those lots, try and find some grass, you know, so this water is just going straight to the lake. And, we know, we've done things for, you know, impervious surface, or not so much that, but for rain gardens and things like that, but rain gardens aren't really- But rain gardens aren't really that effective, because you can't build them that big. You know, you can't take a whole lot in one little rain garden. We've tried to do it on a few lots, and they have been horribly ineffective. The only way you can only affect something, and others, you know, other, other lakes have done something similar, you know, is limit how much grass or impervious surface is available to absorb water. And if some of it, you know, perfect world, it'd be a hundred percent, but that would not be practical. Fifty percent of a lot, and these are talking large lots, the one I'm thinking of down here by Seven Seas, that was probably an acre lot, that's fifty thousand square feet, and he's probably got forty thousand impervious surface there. And, you know, just trying to at least affect the large abuses. The small stuff, we're not concerned about. It's not going to affect most of the lots anyways, because any existing lot right now would not be part of this ordinance. It'd be just lots that would be changed and combined and tore down, and, you know, everybody who buys a house on this lake, they tear it down. You know, you have an existing four thousand square foot house on a nice lot, it's gone. They put a fifteen, twenty thousand square foot lot in.
R O one, R O one A, R O two, so they're what, half-acre, one-acre lots? But just thinking about the easements, this, this could make it impossible for somebody to provide an easement. And we've, we've done that recently with some, some lots, required an easement in order to, you know, redraw some lot lines.
I'm not sure how an easement would affect this. As long as the easement was not impervious, it wouldn't have any effect at all.
A road, a roadway easement is, we typically want them paved.
Some of the homes have easements, so somebody can access the home that's neighboring.
So, cur, so currently, if you want to put, so if you want to put in a sport court, or a new patio, or a walkway, or pavers, you do not need a building permit for that. So, the ability to move forward to maintain enforcement of this, regardless of the lot size, whether it's a tear down or not, would require, likely require those things to be put in place. We do not have them in place right now.
This is a worthy topic to consider, and I'm glad that you brought it here, because it deserves the thought, Paul. But what I wonder is if the, I think what Danielle was alluding to is...
Can I?
There are a lot of situations where it might not really make sense, because there are other ways to deal with it. Could it be?
I can't think of any other.
Well, could it be, what I mean, could it be feasible for the Planning Commission to evaluate each site? And make sure the water plan isn't going to cause a problem of runoff to the lake that we're trying to avoid here? And if they can't come up with a drainage system that prevents that, that this thing, then they're restricted in this way, but not just restrict them out of hand, because there are some sites where it wouldn't really go to the lake anyway. Does that make sense?
Not, not entirely.
There's, there's not a motion yet, just...
I don't know that...
We're discussing this.
Yeah, I'm just discussing, I'm just throwing it out there.
No, no, I know, I'm saying there's plenty of room to discuss merits of a motion up or down, as opposed to debating it without one.
Okay.
So, we're looking, I mean, the, the question is whether or not the common council believes we should initiate an application to, um, to initiate, to, to create this ordinance.
I'll make a motion to initiate text amendments to chapter fifty-two zoning ordinance regarding impervious surface provisions as recommended by Lake Welfare Committee. And the matter placed on the next Plan Commission to schedule a public hearing.
All right, we'll second that. Is there any more discussion?
I'd like to finish with a thing about, about easements. I know you, yeah, I know an existing easement, existing roadway, whatever, doesn't, doesn't have to go away, but it also prevents somebody from, if, if it puts them at the limit, it prevents them from doing a normal development on their property. There's, there are properties with three, four, five thousand square feet of roadway easement on the property that's required, right? Where you can't get to your property, because you've got to go through your neighbor's property.
Oh, that's, um...
So, that counts against you?
It would have come in against one of the lots. You know, the lot that that rule is on.
So, why would anybody ever give an easement to their neighbor for access? If it counts against their impervious surface?
Again, depends on the size of those lots, too. If they're all smaller lots, it wouldn't apply.
There clearly needs to be some vetting of unintended consequences.
Did you ever go to Kent's house?
Which Plan Commission could do.
You go through a lot of, a lot of people's yards to get there.
Understood.
Just as an example.
Any other comments or questions, discussion?
We'll let the Plan Commission, you know, knock that out, and then we'll see what we come back with, and we'll come back with here, and then have a discussion.
So, I'm clear, this would go then to the Planning Commission next? And then they would send it back to us with their consideration?
Kill it, change it, or instead, send it back to us.
And do we understand correctly also that in between there, before we'd ever vote on it again, there'll be a public hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
This is unnecessary legislating to legislate.
Okay.
We don't have a problem in, on any one property.
That's why it came here. The Plan Commission didn't want to deal with the political aspects of the intricacies of this, and how overreaching it would be.
Mark, but I think it's worthwhile to let them take another crack at it at the Planning Commission and see if they can weed out some of these concerns that you raised, as well as others. If they can, maybe it reduces that feeling that you and I will share about that.
Was Lake Welfare unanimous in their recommendation?
Yes, and has been for three years, so... Okay, barring banning, or, you know, without any other discussion, like to, like to hear the vote on moving forward with the initiation to app, an app, for an application to amend the chapter fifty-two zoning ordinance for impervious surfaces, um, moving forward. All those favors, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say nay?
Nay.
Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. So, Plan Commission is going to have a couple of long meetings. Anything else for Plan Commission, Mr. Mayor?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Lake Welfare Committee.
Okay, well, we talked about impervious surface, so we don't have to address that one. We talked about wake surfing recommendations. We've got signs going up at the two boat launches, and we're going to try and continue to do this on a voluntary basis. And we're going to put something in the, uh, our paper, you know, to discuss what those issues are, including a picture of them, of the map, if possible. Then we, we set the lake awareness meeting for September eighteenth, again, at the American Legion. That worked out well last year. And an update on geese, we're not seeing a lot of geese, so it looks like we're probably not going to have a goose roundup this year. So, I'll cut it off right there.
All right, um, Dee, Park and Rec.
Uh, no meeting, but I'm happy to report that we had a successful kids fishing clinic this past Saturday at the fish hatchery, freshly stocked. We had about twenty-five kids and their parents participate, and I think every kid caught at least a half a dozen fish.
Yeah, thanks for, Dick Smith's for doing that every year. Those guys are great. They provide a bunch of equipment and that.
Yeah.
And expertise.
A bunch of people to help the kids, it was great, great education, great experience for the kids.
Yeah, if you ever see anyone get stumped at, or skunked at the pond down by St. John, send them down to the fish hatchery. It's called that for a reason. There is a lot of fish in that little pond.
Yes.
All right, anything else?
Nope.
All right, thank you. Park, uh, Public Works Committee.
The committee met the last time, is scheduled on May seventh. And we don't have anything for the council tonight, but I want to give you a couple of quick updates. We did consider a request by a citizen to limit the parking on Milwaukee Street, and the committee decided that we would not further restrict parking because of a number of issues, including landscape trucks and things like that. And, and we thought that the restriction would probably cause more problems than, than what we have now. So, we, we opted not to do that. Also, we discussed the Hillside Crosswalk project that has been ongoing for a while. And that's not on the agenda tonight, because we had a change notice, and, and when we sent it back to the contractor, they came up with a surprisingly large quote. And so, we're, we're looking for some alternate sources there. So, that will probably be on our next month's agenda.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Police Commission.
Yes, we met. It was a brief meeting, and it was really to discuss recruitment and hiring specifically. And so, not much to share in terms of minutes, because it was a closed meeting. But, yeah, that's all from police.
All right, thank you. Let's see, Library Board.
Yeah, we had a meeting, and we are, it's been very nice. We have the directors from each department are coming in one at a time to kind of share what they're doing with the library. And it's been really fun to hear about the individual programs and, and things that they're doing for that. And then the, the one thing I wanted to note specifically is we are discussing the potentially starting a committee to potentially look into a library foundation that could maybe help fund some of the programming that would need additional funding to help raise money for this library specifically. So, I think that maybe they can accomplish some of the needs from the library by having that. So, if you're interested in joining the Library Foundation Committee, they're possibly looking into what that would look like and how we would get that going, reach out to Stephanie or any of the Library Board members.
All right, great. Zoning Board of Appeals, I don't believe there's a meeting.
No meeting, no report.
Okay. Promotional and Tourism Committee.
So much going on, along with all the activities in Della Spring. I do want to touch on one thing, and that was the ribbon-cutting ceremony at Lappam Peak Lodge. We had a boisterous crowd, SRO, standing room only. We had the governor there, Representative Ducal. It was really awesome. If you haven't had a chance to check out the lodge, it's quite beautiful. And I do want to encourage people to check out, visit dellafield dot o, uh, O R G. The website is absolutely beautiful. We have a wonderful promotion company. I love our tagline, Della Field, it's in our nature. There's lots of new promotions going on online and venues to reach people. And it's, you know, as I said to the, our chair, if I didn't already live here, I'd want to move to Della Field, looking at the, the promotions. They're fantastic, so that's all.
All right, nice. So, we got the governor here, that's good to know. Lake Country Fire and Rescue Commission? I don't believe there's a meeting. Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board?
No meeting. Next meeting is this Wednesday. It is not, if I recall, it's at the Training Center in Neshoda, not at Station Forty-two in the city of Della Field. So, um, Wednesday, I believe, double-check that, I will confirm that. But otherwise, no report.
All right, thank you. Dear Management Committee.
No meeting, no report. Our next scheduled meeting was going to be tomorrow night. It's been canceled due to lack of business, so our next meeting will be next month.
Okay. Other committees, commissions, and boards, there are none, unfinished business, discussion, and possible action proceed with the selection of MGT for the city's classification and compensation study and to pursue entering into an agreement with a fixed fee of twenty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. We have guest speaker Crystal here to present or ask, answer questions. Wants to start, Tom or Crystal?
Crystal's going to take the ball on this.
Right.
Okay, so, my name's Crystal Turner, I'm deputy clerk. I, we actually went through the RFP, the Request for Proposal for the Wage and Compensation Study. We wrote their proposal back in December, January, if you remember, and it came to the common council. It did go out for the consultants to respond from February through March this year. We got sixteen responses back, which was really good. We did narrow it down with our scoring rubic as from staff here during the month of April, March, and April, to six. So, our top six, we did have about a week and a half ago, twenty-minute calls with each of those, just to clarify a couple of questions that we had for each of them, to see how they covered their proposal, and if they were a good fit for City of Della Field team to, to work with. From that, we narrowed it down to MGT, they were formerly Gov, HR, and they are the ones that we are recommending to go ahead with, with the City of Della Field Wage and Compensation Study. Any questions?
Anything to add, or, Tom, or?
I have an observation, and not to run on your parade, but I would be a hard stop on these people. I would say no, under, because their passion and priority is diversity, equity, and inclusion in all of their work, which I don't want, I don't want to have any... According to their documents that they submitted in their packet, their priorities and passions are diversity, equity, and inclusion in all of their work. I do not want any association with doing that in this city, because that's illegal, and I don't want to be associated with that happening here in any way. So, I would not be comfortable with the judgment of this particular organization.
And, and I have, I, what don't you like? You don't like to include, or you don't want to have equity?
I don't believe in discrimination for any purpose.
Where is the term discrimination in equity and inclusion and diversity? Where does it say discriminate?
Diversity, equity, and inclusion is commonplace known to mean to choose based on race, gender, or sex. Or, um, political affiliation.
I think that's projecting. I've spent my life in public service, and I would like to submit that for much of our educational time and much of our history, it has been exclusionary. So, I would welcome inclusion. It doesn't mean to exclude everything, and it certainly is no reflection on the quality of the company. But it bothers me terribly that that would be the reason. That has nothing to do with what they're doing, other than they want to include people, which I'm kind of at for.
Does their scope include issues related to DEI? For what we have them for, I see the project purpose. And we, the council approved this allocation of personnel structure review, department staffing structure to identify solutions for optimizing efficiency, compensation, equity, to attract and retain employees, employee retention, benefit review, performance-based compensation plan. The council's approval of this was, if I'm recalling correctly, to get a, a good feel, an objective assessment of how we compensate our employees.
Correct. So, um, the scope that's put under the project purpose in the memo that was provided in here is what we talked with each of the six that we interviewed with, and what we looked for within their proposals as the sixteen came in for those. So, your question is on DEI specifically, or?
Yes, in part, I share, share Alderman Laughlin's concerns that DEI can often be a distraction and a, a distraction to hiring great employees. I understand Alder Person valid his concerns, though, as well. So, but our purpose through the city of Della Field and how we, why we allocated this money has nothing to do with DEI, per my recollection, per, and per the project's scope. Is that accurate?
Correct, correct.
Did this, were conversations held about DEI and what they could do to improve our diversity, equity, and...
Specifically, questions on that, no, we did not ask. We were asking based on the questions, and I attached them within the memo as well, the six questions that we went through with each of them individually. And they were the questions that we had them answer on the one-on-one for the twenty minutes, to make sure they were a good fit for the city of Della Field to match what we wrote in the RFP.
Thank you, Crystal.
I'm going to piggyback on that. Their recommendations for what they're doing for us would have, is just on the types of jobs correctly. There's nothing that would be related to any kind of, anything based on sex or gender or any other qualifying.
Correct, they're going to look at the specific types of jobs and the roles to optimize... Correct. They're going to look at the specific types of jobs and the roles to optimize efficiency within the roles for that, but not based on the DEI, but based on the specific job functions.
Okay, thank you.
I also see that you have compensation equity, which uses that word equity, but you're trying to make things not all the same, but equitable, which means that they meet the needs. And the whole idea is that we as a city have struggled with keeping employees. In fact, I'm looking at one who's leaving. And maybe studying it and getting over little words that bother us that we, we need to pay attention to equity and how we have inclusive benefits. And, you know, as females, we are typically paid less still to this day for the exact same qualifications, doing the exact same work, the exact same amount of time. So it does matter. And that was part of the purpose, I thought, was to look at how we compensate and how we might do a better job of not just attracting, but retaining and maintaining our employees.
You could argue that there's a lack of male presence in the current office right now. I didn't vote for this originally, or at least I didn't think I did. I tried to get it removed because I think the allocation of money would just be better spent giving raises to, more raises to the current staff. But I guess I lost that debate and I guess I don't have significant objections to this proposal.
I would share what you felt before and that I would rather see the money used to give it to our employees. I think we could probably find plenty of information to guide some of these decisions if we simply did some research.
Do we, we don't have a motion yet, do we?
No.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and first, the purpose of discussion and two, I'm going to move to approve. Let's see, how do I phrase this? Right, you're needing a motion to approve this?
We're looking to proceed with the selection of MGT as the contractor that was chosen for this, not to spend the money, but to specifically select this.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and move to approve the selection of MGT for the city's classification and compensation study and to pursue entering into agreement with a fixed fee of $23,470.
Second, is there any further discussion? Questions?
The only thing I must say is whether you agree with DEI or not, I'm not going to say one way or another. I think that that's just a kind of, I think it would be hard to maybe exclude companies based on that. I think a lot of different companies do a lot of different scopes. And even if you don't agree with everything that a company does, if it doesn't apply to us in general, I think that it would be, we would be remiss to exclude a company based on their, their.
So weigh my two cents in this. It would be unfair to exclude companies that are in the business of excluding companies? I'm just, there's irony that you're trying to state.
I just mean it's, it's, yeah, so I.
It's their business to specifically exclude people based on what, okay.
So, so I, regardless of the opinions on their political beliefs that way, I think it's based on the information that we've been given, I think that they will serve our purpose as well.
Okay, so to enhance.
That's outside the scope of our project.
We are very interested in raw data and recommendations on compensation levels and not how and who we should hire. Right? Okay.
Yes, that is what I.
I'm not, I'm.
No, that, that is what I was getting at.
I object to the mayor putting words.
And also there's a term for that, I'm not going to, okay. I'm sorry, no, I just.
No, I, I, I think that.
You were very eloquent.
Yes, thank you.
Is there any other questions or comments?
The only comment I would say is that I'm going to trust your judgment. You looked at all these other companies and you recommended this one. You did the homework. You made the recommendation. I'm going to take your advice, as we do most of the time, especially when we have, you know, strong recommendation. They were clearly the, the best or whatever in your estimate, so I see no reason to object.
And you had 16 responses for the proposal? That's, you had a lot to choose from?
Yes.
That's great.
A lot of companies do this.
And I'll say one more thing, Steven, because you weren't here right when we, when we approved this initially. Part of the argument for it was that this was requested from the staff, right? This was requested from the staff. And one of the things that we talked about was just morale and giving, and this was something that was requested from them. So while maybe we would have rather given the money that way, this is something that I asked for, so that's why we were accommodating that.
And it is no guarantee that the city will follow the recommendations, given our levy limits, budget constraints, et cetera.
I think this is a question, though, of design versus execution, and we feel like we need a little bit more help on the design side right now. And so we want to go out and get the best in class, get some expertise that we don't currently have in-house. And then we can see what we want to do with those recommendations. As Matt said, we may not do anything with them, but at least we'll be a little smarter when we make those decisions.
I'm just going to chime in and say that part of this process, almost every one of the proposals said it's very important from the beginning to get an understanding from the Common Council on what their philosophy is, where do they want to position themselves in the labor market? They want to be at the top, they want to be average, they want to be on the low end. So there is going to be opportunities for input from the council upfront on philosophy. And then obviously at the end of the process, the final report will be presented to the Common Council.
And I'll use different words, I mean, than, than high, low and middle. And one is, I mean, do you want to nurture and be an incubator for new talent and new ideas? And perhaps churn through people maybe at a, at a higher rate than some? Do we want to be a destination for lifelong employees? Or, you know, do we want to be somewhere in between? And so I like those words better.
No, that's a great characterization.
But I think, I think that's, I think that's the direction we're headed and I think we can get some good, good guidance if we, if we have a good partner and pointing us in the right direction, so.
I'm all in favor of all of those good guidance things. I just don't think we're going to get that from this crew personally. But I'm sure that we'll get something. We can evaluate it again then.
Well put. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose say nay?
Nay.
Abstentions? Okay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Crystal. All right. Okay, Mayor's Report. I've just got a couple of things. One was already stated, love, I love the fishing event, Park and Rec, love Dick Smith. I've been here since I was, I was a little kid, so if I give them too many, too many pitches during our meetings, it's my fault, but, but they're great.
You're never too old to come out and.
No, and, and like I said, there's tons of fish in that, in that pond. The other thing is I had the opportunity to, from the Chairman of the Lake Welfare Committee, to go out on the lake in his rather massive pontoon boat, which is new and expensive, which I'll give a pitch to Mike. But went and checked out the dredging effort. And I'd say it was good timing. It was early last week. And a couple of other people were launching their boats and they've been able to navigate through places actually where Mike Hausman was standing in the middle of the lake in a picture saying, "We need to dredge this." So it was money well spent and it was a huge, huge heavy lift that took years and lots of private as well as public support and energy. And I'll call it a success. We'll see, we'll see how long it, it sustains itself. But we also took a trip down different parts of the lake. I've been, been on the lake on and off for the last, you know, since I've lived here. But went down and checked out the new buoys that are down in St. John's Bay to navigate to and from the dam area and back. And it does guide people to the deepest part of the bay. And then, like I said, I don't know, 20 foot, 21-foot boat with a 200 horsepower motor on the back. We weren't churning up salt and we did a U-turn and came out. And very, very nice to see that that worked and that, that Lake Welfare has been doing to, to guide people appropriately is in place. Also a pitch for Hawks Inn, June 7th, first Saturday in June is Rhubarb Fest. Great blue grass band that's going to be playing for free. Check it out. It's, like I said, it's two weeks from Saturday. Aside from that, that's all I have for the Mayor's Report, other than, this is Public Service Awareness Month or Public Service Employees Month. We've had the police EMS, Public Works is this week. Don't, don't discriminate. If you see someone working for the city, you just had your brush picked up if you put any out there. Give a high five to those guys and our police and fire and city staff upstairs. They do great work. They deserve congratulations and thanks. So from that, I'll move on to new business. 10A, discussion and action for, regarding contingent approval of a draft lease agreement between City of Della Field and Tall Pines Conservancy for the rental of office space at 421 Main Street, contingent upon incorporation of comments in the contract. Tom, if you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, Tall Pines Conservancy actually approached the city about four years ago, I think in 2021, with an interest in locating the downtown Della Field. And they were aware of some open space we had in our visitor center. And we worked with them at that time. And at the time, the mayor was anxious to partner with them and see them locate in the city and thought it would be mutually beneficial for both parties. But in the end, they decided at that time that it wasn't quite enough space for them and that they needed additional storage space, so they located elsewhere. And just recently, Becky Fiedak.
Would you mind coming up and introducing yourself? Sorry to put you on the spot, but you're here. You're, you're a sole participant in the audience.
So I'll just finish up and then Becky, you can chime in. Becky's the new Executive Director for Tall Pines and their needs have changed again. They've, they've acquired some storage space elsewhere for some of their storage stuff and now their need is more just office. And so they're again interested in downtown Della Field. And so on pretty short order, we put together a quick lease agreement. It still needs a little bit of work. So I'm asking for contingent approval tonight, subject to final staff and attorney review. But we are looking at an agreement for a base rental fee of $850, plus Tall Pines would be responsible for half of the building's utility cost as well. So Becky, did you want to add anything to that?
If you, if you wouldn't mind just saying your name and address, just your official participant.
Sure. Becky Fiedak and my home address?
Whatever address you want to give us.
Okay, yeah, I guess because we're homeless right now as a business. So my home address is South 54 West 30500, State Road 59 in North Prairie. So I actually live in North Prairie, but Tall Pines recently terminated our lease in Neshota. We had been there. I've actually been with the organization for not quite seven months, so I'm very new. But was grateful that Susan, our prior Executive Director, made the connection to the previous outreach to the city as it relates to office space, as Tom mentioned. Excuse me, this change in weather is really affecting me.
Right.
So since we had reached out about four years ago, we actually had the benefit of a farm being donated to us in the village of Waukesha that comes with many farm buildings. So we have many places to store all of our event supplies and things now, but we are still in need of office space. Because our roots are in Lake Country, our board feels very strongly that we need to still have a presence here as we continue to grow our footprint. For those that don't know, Tall Pines is a 501(c)(3) land trust focused on preserving farmland in Southeast Wisconsin. So though our roots are here in Lake Country, we are continuing to grow as demand pressures within Southeast Wisconsin continue to grow. And we want to make sure we're preserving that rural heritage of this region. But we are very excited for this opportunity. I think it fits our needs very well in terms of having that presence with all of the activity here in the City of Della Field, while also allowing us to maintain those connections that we need to and want to have to Lake Country. So really excited for the opportunity and thank you for the time.
I love seeing your signs when you drive through Sheniqua and Village of Canwick Lake and Neshota and wherever else. And hopefully you see more around here too, so.
Yeah, I think it's a great fit. Very excited. And we have Della Field natives who have donated land adjacent to Lapham Peak. And I'm working to get a bench placed there as well in memoriam, so it's kind of cool to have you closer. I'll be able to find you.
Yeah, so, so what do we need to do, Tom?
Just really quick, one more component of the agreement that I'd like to mention is it does include, or it's proposed to include the occasional use of the Fish Hatchery Building for Tall Pines Board Meetings and things like that. But that is contingent upon Park and Rec approval because they do have full authority over that facility. And the idea is that they, Tall Pines would be limited to a maximum of three times per month usage. It would always have to be Monday through Thursday when the city doesn't rent the facility. It couldn't be the Friday through Sunday where we make rental income on it. And that Tall Pines usage would have to work around the existing schedule of Fish Hatchery with recreation programs and whatnot.
What does this mean for the Visitor Center and our Tourism Director's office? Any impact there?
So the Tourism Director has the largest office in the building and then there's two other offices that have been vacant since the chamber left the building. So those are the two offices that they would be using. Our Tourism Director would stay in the largest office. And I have spoken with Jori and we've talked it through and she is very open to this agreement and doesn't have a problem with it.
Good. Go ahead.
Just to add on to that, I've actually had the opportunity to meet Jori a few times and she's actually reached, I think she's excited to have some company in the office. So she's reached out to me a few times just to see status and how things are going.
Can't drink a whole pot of coffee?
Exactly.
I think it's great. I've been a member of Tall Pines on and off throughout the years. I will make a motion to approve the draft lease agreement between the City of Della Field and the Tall Pines Conservancy for the rental of office space located, located at 421 Main Street. City of Della Field Visitor Center, contingent upon incorporation of red line comments in the packet. Final review and revisions by city staff, city and city attorney, and approval of Fish Hatchery usage by City of Della Field Park and Rec Commission.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose say nay? Abstentions? Okay, thanks. Let's move forward. Welcome. Okay, item 10B, discussion and possible action to direct staff to obtain an updated cost estimate for St. John's Pier project and to submit an application for project funding through the Wisconsin recreational boating facilities grant program by the upcoming June 1st, 2025 application deadline. And I'll, I'll do a quick intro into this, and this is not a new topic for the city. We've had an approved permit by the DNR to put, install a pier, a new pier, or extend the existing pier, I should say, downtown and expand its usage to involve public access. It went through an extensive litigation process with the DNR. Was, there was a different, it was contentious about, about the, whether or not it was a thorough review of the permit or not, whether or not there was going to be environmental impact on the bay, what the impact would be on the neighbors and the neighborhood in, in the bay, public's rights, right to do so, existing riparian rights for people who claimed to have access, didn't have access, et cetera. And that was result, a lot of, it was litigated. We, we paid some bills to, to go through that process to protect the city's riparian interests. And the DNR made, the ending ruling was that there was some changes that were recommended that probably should have been, not probably, should have been vetted before the, the process was began, began to begin with. But my intent is that, and I've sustained this opinion since I moved here. And I think it's, it's reasonable that a lake, that a city that was built or that was actually conceived. conceived around the establishment and protection and use of the lake, it's, it's a reasonable amenity to have access to the downtown that it serves to lake residents. And that's, that goes back to the 1970s city's master plan saying that that was an intent back then. But without all that in the background, this is something that's been kind of a 50/50 vote on the council for a while. And I'd like to have it go through the process without the specter of arguing over whether or not we'd, we'd accept state funds if we decide in our budget process this fall that if it costs $130,000 to put a pier in, that we'd be happy to accept $65,000 from the state. And so at this point, we're looking to advance the application for a grant to enable state funding to subsidize this pier if we as a community decide that this is a good idea and, or a good enough idea to pursue. And I'm going to have Lake Welfare and Park and Rec vet this, update, change, amend, upgrade, whatever their recommendations for how we should institute this, talk to the police and public works of how much this would cost long-term and add anything that might be necessary during the process over the summer to see if this is a good idea when it comes to budget. So this isn't passing it saying we're going to do this. This is something that's saying that if we decide it's a good idea, that we'll accept, accept state funding to pay for half. And so that's the grant that we're looking for approval for tonight. And along with that is a actionable, real cost that we'd be acting on this fall because we'd be dealing, if we didn't do this, we'd be dealing off of, if it's, if it's in the budget, which I intended to be this fall, we'd be dealing with a number that falls way short of what we'd want as far as matching funds.
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Is this the grant that is a matching fund grant and don't we need to have the half before we can apply for the other half? That was how I understood it lo these many years ago.
We, we would need to commit to half of, we would need to commit to the full amount of the project to get half. And so we need to define the full amount of the project. The state would say they'd match half and we would need to pass the budget as a part, pass the expenditure this fall.
Yep, but my question is, the way I understood how the grant had to be applied for, and that was one of the arguments in our voting at least twice, was that we, the first time it passed, it passed, it was a 3-3, as you said, 50-50 and the mayor at the time cast the deciding vote. And from that point forward, the other two votes were defeated 4-3 by the council against adding more funding and the way it was presented, and this is just my understanding and I've been wrong before. But my understanding was we had to actually have the funds approved and ready before we could go to the state. Did, did I misunderstand that?
I believe so. Tom, you want to clarify?
Yeah, I mean, I want to say it was probably about three or four years ago, the, the initial resolution that passed, that was a pass resolution by the council saying that they are committed to providing the matching funds for the grant program without defining how much those are.
I thought we had and then we came back for more.
Yeah, I thought that was in the budget document that we passed. Eighty-nine thousand.
It wasn't, we're gonna make the money. It was, we needed the money.
The initial resolution occurred when the project cost estimate was still like $60,000 or something like that. But that resolution was silent to the cost and it just said, the, the city common council intends to fulfill the financial obligation of the grant. Now, that's all the resolution has to say and very often budgets are passed after you apply for the grant.
Yeah, just been four or five years and this has been, as you all know.
That's, that's why it's back on the agenda. For confirmation of direction.
I'm just wondering where the money came because we, I thought we had this amount of money and then you came to us and said, we need another X number of dollars in order to be able to apply for a matching fund grant. So that's, that's my confusion because this has been going on for years and now this is a different approach. So I, I can be wrong.
This is possibly simply, this is possibly redundant in the fact that we, we, I don't know, is the grant, the grant is not still active, is it, Tom, or is it?
No, but the resolution is still active that the council passed.
So the, the resolu, we have an active resolution that says we will match the grant if we, if we apply for it. So we, I am asking, being completely open, saying, we are going to reapply for the grant with an actual dollar amount to come back to the budget in fall as opposed to saying, we've got this grant that's approved and they're gonna match it. Is that, is saying this right, Tom, or am I, am I trying to move my, my point forward without clarification?
This hasn't moved forward because we haven't allocated the money needed.
No, it hasn't, it hasn't.
Because we only, go ahead, Tom.
I'm sorry.
No, you know, you know.
It hasn't moved forward because it was tied up in, in legal contentiousness.
But you couldn't, we couldn't move forward with now. You have a, because the city hasn't allocated an adequate amount to fund it. We've only funded it for the $60,000.
Correct.
Yeah.
So I, so tonight, we're not saying, this is a good idea, we're going forward. Tonight, we're saying, we are going to ask the state to match our funds dollar for dollar if we pass it in fall in our budget, okay?
Do we know how much the total?
I'm not, you know, it's, it's, Tom and I talked about this morning. Tom doesn't think it's good form to apply for money you may not pass.
I agree with Tom.
But it is something that happens all the time. We did it just three months ago when we cut off a 200-yard section of sidewalk and we turned funds back to the state. This would be doing noth, this, DNR is not gonna cry if we don't accept money from them. If we decide in fall, we're not gonna do this.
I mean, what, what commonly happens with grant projects, very commonly, is when you apply for a grant, there's a cost estimate. That's usually a very preliminary cost estimate and after receiving the grants, oftentimes the actual cost comes in sometimes a bit more, sometimes a bit less. It's very common and this would be similar to that.
And the first part of this is, is equally important. We don't know what that amount is. We need to get the updated cost estimates so we know what we're dealing with.
For those that support it. Because for those of us who don't support it.
At any cost?
It's, well, it's putting the cart before the horse. And with the whole argument, especially there was an attempt to put private funding because the council denied adding the funds so that we could have go to the state for the matching grant fund. So it just, it really just leaped out at me when I looked at it and I'll just go back through the minutes to see how it was presented because that is not how I remembered it at all. And so it just feels, what I feel is being happening now is that we're gonna orchestrate, well, we already got the grant, so we might as well go forward with it. That's how I see this unfolding.
I, I apologize if that's the perception. Tom, Tom, I, I suggested that this all be consolidated into a budget discussion, but the, the deadline for the June 1st application date is real and I intend to fully vet this again, like I believe it should have been in the first place. And that is to go through Park and Rec, go through Lake Welfare, get any amendments or changes they think is necessary for, in particular, the, what I feel was the most, and maybe I'm wrong, but what I feel is the most contentious part of this was the enforcement of ours, how it was gonna be communicated to the public, what the impact would be on the residents in the, in the bay, what the impact would be on the environment and, you know, what the cost would be for installing, maintaining and using the pier long-term. And I don't know that, I, I don't believe all those questions were answered last time. We've got a ton of information since then and it's gonna be part of what we go through this summer. This is not, this is not some sort of end around that I'm trying to pull. This is just meeting a deadline to suggest that we be fair with ourselves and say that if a cost is X amount, will the state commit to spending half of it? So if, if you don't agree with it or not, do you agree with the fact that we should apply for the grant to pay for half if it ends up being the people's will that it gets done?
I'm not comfortable with thwarting the will of the people and I agree that an open and honest debate on the merits of this project is hard to argue against. Having said that, I still disagree with the project based on a couple of different reasons. The first of which being that the residents around that area are very much opposed to it. I don't like the west side of the lake imposing its will on the east side of the lake residents. I don't like the allocation of money for a controversial project. I don't like state grant funding for the most part. So, but having said that, a free and democratic debate, I can't object to.
And that includes knowing what the cost is. I mean, if you're in favor or not favor, the cost, the cost is important. We need to make this, make it, you know, any discussion going forward on a, on a position of knowledge and right now, we don't have that knowledge. It's not what the cost is.
Don't we need to know that in order to apply for the grant?
Yes.
Yes, but I've, I'm actively seeking the updated cost right now. We didn't get it in time for this meeting. The grant is due by June 1st. And just looking back at the resolution that was passed in, in the past, without stating a dollar amount, the resolution reads now therefore be resolved that the city of Delafield will meet the financial obligations necessary to fully and satisfactorily complete the project and hereby authorizes and powers the following officials to do certain tasks.
If I'm not mistaken, there are at least two, maybe three, application deadlines for matching grant funds. There's not just one.
There's four. It's quarterly and the June 1st one is the one at the, because the, the state is on a July 1 budget cycle. So if you apply by June 1, those awards are in, made in August. And so that's the first quarter of the year and it's, it's the, the best opportunity for funding, the, the most funding available and the other three quarters tend to be significantly less funding available.
But there are other deadlines, so we don't have to meet a June 1 deadline, which is fast approaching.
Again, if, if you are looking for a successful grant application, it's the best one to apply for. But you are correct, it is quarterly. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you.
To Tom, the fact that you already have the one that we passed four years ago, I'm curious why we need to do another one if you think that one was adequate without any numbers in it?
Given the history of the project, I thought it was appropriate for the council to reaffirm one way or the other.
Start all over again.
If the council wants to pursue this project.
So I'll, I'm gonna throw my two cents in. I'm very much in favor of this project as anyone who's ever heard me talk on it is, has said. However, I think that there needs to be more discussion and a decision by the board if we're gonna move forward with it. So my question would be, if we're applying for, you, you said that we would be getting the funding in August or the funding is, is approved then in August?
Yeah, so if you, you know, you, you apply by June 1, the Waterways Commission meets in August and that's where they make recommendations for awards.
Okay.
Then once they make recommendations for awards, it usually takes DNR staff a month or two after that to get communities their funding agreements. So that's gonna put us towards the end of this year, not feasible to construct it this year. Next year, our permit to install says that you can't install it during the spring due to fish spawning and I can't remember if it's June 1st or June 15th when you can start installing it. So any, if the council decides to move forward with this project, the earliest this is gonna happen is middle of June next year.
One more question, Tom. Not knowing what the top end of this project is, the state will approve a project that you don't even know what the numbers are?
We will have numbers by our June 1 application date.
Okay.
We don't have another count. Well, we, we could schedule a special council meeting if that's a deciding factor.
June 1st?
Is that?
Isn't June 1st a Sunday?
Isn't June 1st a Sunday?
Yes.
So you have to have it in on a Sunday. I'm just surprised, it is, I'm looking at my calendar.
So I think all. I think all their dates are the first of the month.
Okay.
And I would ask, have to ask them for interpretation as to whether that means June 2nd. Do you get the extra day or should we get it in by the Friday before to be compliant?
I'm not trying to help that, but I just wanted to clarify it.
So, moving forward means passing this in the budget.
Right. So my question, I have another question. If we pass it, so if we, if we put it into the budget in the fall, which I hope we do, I'd like to see it there so we can have this discussion and, and decide, are we gonna move forward with this? But can we include in the, in the budget that it would only be approved if we receive a grant? Because I feel like we've done that before.
If we do apply by the June 1 deadline, you'll know whether we're getting the grant or not before you approve the budget.
No, okay, so if we're, if you, if that's, what if we approved it in the fall and applied for the grant next year? Like next June?
Next June?
Yeah.
Then you'd be looking at a 2027 install.
But we could put, include it in?
I would like this to, Frank, I would like this to come to a head.
Right.
We went through a lawsuit, this is, this is four years old.
No, I, I totally agree with that, but.
I'm looking for, like, I'm, I'm working, the purpose of moving forward at this timeline is to.
Is to get it moving.
Decide this year if this pier is gonna happen. It's not, it's not to take sides, it's to say, the most prudent thing to do is if, if the board, the council decides that we're, that we want to do this, that we have a 50/50 matching fund and not do this all on our own and have, you know, I'm not, I don't, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to find private funds, I'm not trying to find anything else. I want the best effort from all parties opposed and for to be present during this budget year, knowing that this is the best case we can make for or against it and, and put this behind us. Either it's gonna happen or it's not.
Okay. So the discussion that we have in the fall over the budget is just gonna be yes or no at that point and if the grant is approved or not is irrelevant?
It would be part of the equation.
It's relevant if we, if we pass it.
It would be part of the equation for this fall's.
If we don't pass it, it's irrelevant.
Right. So let's, I'm just throwing a number out. If it's a $130,000 pier, which might be low, it's either gonna be a budget item for 65 grand or 130 based on whether or not we want to ask for grants.
But for those of us, or not for those of us, I, I am for this project 100% but for the ones who are not for it, we would be able to come to a head about whether or not we're going to approve it during the budget discussions.
Yeah, do you want to be on the losing side that's for it and pay nothing or do you want to be the losing side and that votes against it?
No, 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 I'm just saying.
And pays 65 or 130.
No, but I'm saying there are, I think there, there, I, I don't actually believe that the issues related to this PR are budget related. I think that the people that are against it are not against it for budget purposes. I think they're against it for other reasons. So.
Then there'd be no reason to vote against asking for a grant.
That's, okay, but my, my point is we're gonna have that discussion about whether or not we're moving forward on this during the budget discussions either way. Correct?
What's that?
Sorry.
This is not the last discussion.
I think, like, for, for the people that are against it, not just for budget purposes, we are going to have that discussion during the budget, during budget.
Yeah, yeah. If there's not, if it's not a good enough case to vote yes, then.
Okay.
It's not gonna get spent.
All right.
Neither's the budget.
This is just a discussion on getting a cost update and applying for.
This is an action, this is an action, direct staff to go for the grant.
So I, I will make a motion to direct staff to apply for the grant by June 1st.
A second. And get updated.
And get the updated cost related to it.
Tim, the only concern I still have is, I really applaud you in your effort to revet this whole project like it should have been done in the first place. My only concern is in a couple of months, that might be tough to do because, you know, East Coines don't even meet until July and summer is a tough time, some meetings are canceled. I'm a summer in the fall and we got two months to figure this out and this has been a project that's been going on for a lot longer than that. That's, that's a pretty short time period. Then, then it'll be a weak case and it'll fail. Right? I mean.
I mean, remember, we're talking about June of 2026 installation.
Yeah. It's not installation, it's gotta be approved around Thanksgiving time, right? To get in the budget for next year.
Yeah, but I mean theoretically, you can approve a. Yeah, I mean theoretically, you can approve a project and come up with operating instructions afterwards, but.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna create like a last ditch effort, because we could pull the plug when we approve the, the borrowing in spring, which would be probably a majority vote or some, a super majority or something, but I'm, I'm being practical and saying, is that right?
Yeah, if we're doing a June install, we're probably ordering materials like in February or March.
All right, we're getting into the weeds. So, all right, so there's a motion and a second. Is there any other question? All right, we're directing staff to apply for a grant to have a, an educated guess in fall, educated decision in fall. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, motion passes. From there, what do we have? Approval of the vouchers payable report for reporting dates of May 7th through May 20th and April 18th in the amount of $231,910.47.
I move to approve the voucher list.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Report of city officials, Tom.
Just a few quick updates. The mayor and I will be attending the next LCFR Wisconsin Policy Forum meeting this Wednesday, where each of the communities comes back on the most recent funding proposal, so we'll see how that goes. Reminder, National Public Works Week is this week, so if you see the guys out and about, give them an attaboy or a pat on the back. And then lastly, last week was the citywide spring brush collection, and Paul Zellner puts together a nice spreadsheet, given kind of some of the statistics involved with the brush pickup, including total man-hour spend, truck miles, loader miles, fuel used, and loads of brush hauled. And so I included that in your packet, it's interesting stuff, and that goes all the way back to 2008, and gives kind of the spring and fall totals for each year going back, back that far. So, any questions on those updates? All right, that's all I have.
All right, thanks, Tom. City Clerks' report, Molly's not here, she's got time off. I hope it's for recreation, well deserved. And City Treasurers' report, if it's there, it's in the packet. Council requests for future agenda items.
I do have one request, and that is, I'd like, not, not a discussion in action, but really a discussion for the common council. I think there are a lot of smart people here, and I'd like us to discuss how we determine best use of city funds for projects. I think often we, we have that discussion, but we haven't actually defined what we mean by that. And, yeah, so, a discussion.
Okay, it may or may, it may be something that we find reason for a special meeting to have somebody talk to us about, but we'll, we'll, I'll get it on the future agenda or get it addressed in some way, that's a good idea.
I trust you.
Okay. Anything else?
I, I have one. Lake Welfare Committee submitted these wake boat safety guidelines, I'd like to counsel to consider whether we want that to remain voluntary, or whether or not this should be part of the municipal code.
Is that on, okay.
Wake boats?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the wake boat.
For fear of discussing it now, which would take eight hours, I will, we'll all get, we'll, we'll seek some clarity as far as how we wanna approach that with you, Mark, okay?
Okay.
Anything else? Yes, I'd like to put, we, a couple years ago, we put a agenda item that we passed to come back with some kind of a tree ordinance to protect our hardwoods and the big trees along the lake. I'd like to come back with some suggestions on what some of those parameters might be, then we can get some input from the council, and then go back and hopefully get something written up. Okay, we'll get that on there too. Usually these are silent periods in the meeting. Anything else? Man, there's four of you haven't spoken up. Okay, seeing no other agenda items, the meeting is now adjourned at 8:37. Thank you.